I know that there's many millions of dollars to be invested in.
Call this meeting and Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, October 24th, 2016. Our chairman has been called away on urgent business. He will be enjoying the World Series tomorrow night, so he'll be chairing the meeting this evening. We don't have a public hearing this evening. We also do not have any minutes in previous meetings to approve. The next regular select board meeting is Monday, November 14th, 7:00 PM. It will be here. Upcoming workshops, Monday, November 28th, 4:00 at the Richardson Room. That'll be a wastewater workshop. Library workshop scheduled for Wednesday, November 30th, 7:00 PM here in the meeting room. That'll be streamed. And a tax increment financing workshop Wednesday, December 7th, 4:00 PM at the Rockport Town Office Meeting Room, the Richardson Room. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, as if you could have missed that by now. Polls will open at 8:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. Voting is in the Richardson Room at the Town Office, and the signs will be there to tell you which door to go in and which door to leave. Town Office will be closed Friday, November 11th for Veterans Day, and Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th for Thanksgiving. The agenda shows committee openings. We are always happy to have more people volunteering to serve on committees for the town. Agenda changes. Do we have some agenda changes this evening?
I move to bring the wastewater commissioners' business to before unfinished business.
Okay. Have a motion.
You gotta make them sit through my manager's report.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. So we'll move that one up. Any other agenda changes?
Can we put the John Alexander discussion off to the next meeting so that both John and Bill can be here?
Any objection to that?
None.
Okay. We will do that also. So we will skip that item. Okay. Public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission of the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Does anybody wish to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Town Manager.
Couldn't put the sewer above my manager's report, huh? So I'm gonna try and go through this quickly. Summer Street is still not completed. I noted in here that the side, the stairs will be done this week, but they actually started them on Friday. I think they probably had a little time and people to get that work started. So they're hoping they're gonna be done this week, correct?
I think they're done today.
Looked like they were all in when I drove by.
Yeah, those stairs were pretty.
But no, the whole project, they're shooting for sometime this week, is what he told me.
The favor indicated that you would have an opening at the end of the week, and that would be good temperatures, so hopefully so.
So no, it won't be done next, this week. It'll be done sometime the week after, more than likely. The paving will be done, but they'll still have other work to get done. So the high sidewalk, that one is also stalled, waiting utility relocations. The poles have been moved. The utility, the power company was pretty efficient getting that done, but we are still waiting for Fairpoint and Time Warner to move their.
Not Tidewater, but not Fairpoint.
Oh, they're Tidewater? Yep.
That explains the delay, huh?
Yep. So there's a lot, most of this work, they were notified last wintertime, the beginning of the winter, right? They were notified, and they're just now getting to it. So it looks as if it's gonna delay us, no?
No, they'll navigate everything, the cement, the handrail done.
Right.
And then we don't want it half-done through the winter.
Right. So it looks like we'll be postponing that. Mike has been on the phone daily trying to get them, get information, but they just, the utility companies just are not responding.
Can I ask one question about that? Is there any sort of glaring health and safety concerns with the high sidewalk as it currently is that we should do before?
Nothing that's changed from the last four years. We could have ice, and something could move, and.
Just didn't know if any of the handrails were in jeopardy of.
The whole sidewalk is not terribly safe. The alternative is to just close the high sidewalk, and then people will be walking in the street.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
You know, it's, I don't know what we do.
We can make sure none of the rails gets rid of.
Was it just because of the extension, just like a quick patch, hopefully inexpensive, just something? I don't know. Throwing it out there.
The vestibule is pretty much done. We're now waiting for the emergency phone and the cameras to be put in there. The one, we did, we have developed a leak with the wind-driven rain we've seen over the past few storms, couple storms. There's a leak someplace that we've got to track down.
They'll, they'll, they should be there tomorrow, kind of thing.
The West Street sidewalk extension, we're, the sidewalk on this side of the street is completed, but we've stopped on the other side of the street. We were going pretty well on finishing that up, according to what the state wanted us to do. And right now, it, we were told two weeks ago that they were gonna dig that up and put in a new culvert, and we should wait. They were gonna dig that up two weeks ago, and you see it's still not dug up. So that, we're waiting on that, and it's, I'm not sure if they're gonna get to that this.
Last I heard, the second week of November, they were gonna do it at night.
Oh, okay. The drainage from Central Street that runs down through the parking lot and behind Saltwater Farm, not Saltwater Farm, Nine of June and 18 Davies, Central Street, that has been giving us a problem all summer. We thought we had, we were able to fix it, but we weren't. So Mike had to go in this week, and they put a pretty substantial extension that went around the building because the old pipe went under the building somehow, someplace. We're not sure. Yep. So we had to replace that to get the water from, basically from Central and the parking lot down through and, and under, through Rockport Marines property. So that's completed now, correct, Mike?
With the exception of the paving.
Yeah. With the exception of the paving, okay. Fire Department's been very busy, as you, as you have seen in the papers. They've been out with a lot of calls, but one of the things Jason has been doing, it's been doing a lot of training at, for Fire Safety Week. Sparky, the dog, the big dog thing that they use, has been very popular at the school. The police officers from Camden and Rockport both did training at the range this past week. I attended to give them my support for the training that they do. It's a day-long training that, for them all to get qualified at the range. You know, as I pointed out in a Facebook post, police officers can be real jokesters when it comes to messing around and joking about stuff, but when they were at the range, it's, they take that, their range training very, very seriously. And I don't think it was simply because I was there. I think that they, they take their qualification at the range as really important to them. So they were very appreciative of my attending there. The library has been holding their seafaring series along with, you know, Ben doing all his work on the library, you know, the library bond issue coming up. But from what I understand, the Thursday night event with Peter Ralston was a huge turnout. There was about 240 people. The docks will be coming out of the water soon. They'll be pulling them out in stages and leaving some, some of the docks in, so people that are, still have boats out and out, have a place to bring their boats into. The Public Works Crew is pretty much back up to full staff now. They've gotten all their vacations in that they're gonna get in. As you remember, last year, we were two weeks away from a major snowstorm right about now. So, two years ago, I mean.
History may repeat itself.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks. You heard that?
Less than a week.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, great. Yeah. Mike said, I heard Mike saying under his breath, he's going on vacation. But, so there are, it does take a lot of work getting the trucks back up to shape and get them, getting them ready for the first storm. They've, they've been working on that for several weeks now. On top of that, they've gotten the crosswalks painted. There was a lot of concern about that, rightly, but with the paving, you know, the paving was late coming, so it meant that we were in the midst of guys getting their vacations in and getting time off. And so they just got the crosswalks done again. As you remember, we were late getting the crosswalks in because we were expecting the paving to be done earlier in the season, and we're hoping to just paint once, and then that didn't happen. DOT threw us another curveball and came in in September, middle of September, end of September, they came in finally. And one of the problems we're having, you'll notice, is several of the manhole covers are low, and the sewer department and Mike and those guys went around and raised all of them up to the ones that needed to be raised for the five-eighths of an inch of, quote, skinny mix that they were supposed to put on for us. And so they raised them up, expecting that what would, what was coming in was three, five-eighths of an inch of pavement, and actually, in some places, it's two-plus inches. And so it's, you know, you have some places where those manholes are down a couple inches. So I noticed they're marked to get cut out, so they're, everybody, when everybody sees us going in and now cutting the road, and to raise those sewer covers, it's, you know, we had them raised up to the right height, but they're still not high enough because in some of the corners, they ended up putting in several inches of pavement, not just five-eighths.
Some of that work may end up being done at night, too.
Oh, okay.
While the property.
Okay. And the ball fields at the Marge Jones Fields have been reworked and resorted as planned, and Mike checked on that, the irrigation. And they, they do, they pull that, that meter out to keep it from freezing, so we'll have to, Mike is gonna talk to the sports fields guys to see what they think. Do we put the meter in and risk it getting frozen again, getting it frozen, or to keep it watered, or we may have enough water over the next couple days, a couple weeks, to continue to let that, to get that to grow. So, so that's my report.
Any questions for the manager? Okay. Hearing none. We will move on to wastewater commissioners.
Move to close the select board and open as wastewater commissioners?
Second.
Moved and seconded to enter as wastewater commissioners. Any discussion? All in favor? None? Any opposed? Okay. We are wastewater commissioners. First item on the agenda is the commitment of the sewer user rates for August 2016.
Move to commit the August 2016 wastewater user, and debt fees totaling $30,256.72 to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay. The second item is the discussion regarding sewer services to 195 Commercial Street, which is on the Harbor Rentals, otherwise known as the Rockport Investment Group. In our last meeting, we discussed this, and asked to bring it forward and have some work done, so I will let Rick present that, and then we have some other folks here to speak on that also.
Yes, as you can see from my comments, one of the things is, is that this extension has been planned for a couple of years now. We've been, we've been, as you remember, the Board talked about this a couple of years ago, when there was a potential tenant in the, what's called the Blue House right on the corner. And so the goal was to push that sewer line up the hill to the Tropical Nails place? Is that, that's what it is, right?
No.
Up the hill to Tropical Nails. So we, we voted, approved getting that work done. So the survey was done in December of 2014, and then the design for that extension up the hill to Tropical Nails was completed in February 15th. The goal was to have it be shovel-ready, basically, so that if a user came along that needed that extension, we would be ready to go, because it's, there's several properties along there that are potential, it would be a potential benefit. So the Board has been talking about that, this for several years now. So the wastewater, and the wastewater department is financially in excellent shape. We have money set aside for pretty much every project we could imagine. There's money already set in a reserve account, yeah. I mean, Nate and Megan can explain it, but you know, you've done a good job with the wastewater account, funding things and putting money into the reserves. The only thing that we possibly could have a problem with is something unanticipated that is not part of a reserve already, that isn't, that could come up, a major failure of a pump that was, is unexpected, which they typically are if they're, if it's an old pump. But Nate can, can talk about where that money would come from, Nate and Megan would come, can talk about where that money would come from. And there is money in the reserves, you know, there's a plan for replacement of all that equipment. So it's a matter of just making those decisions when those happens, but that, those things happen, but it would be, we would be, we probably should and would be able to create a reserve for those small, smaller unexpected expenditures. A pump, I think you would say, and the most expensive pump replacement would be about 20 or 25,000 bucks?
Yeah, on the very high side.
Yeah. So that's, those are the things that we have that are major replacement costs, that aren't, everything, pretty much everything is part of a CIP plan. You know, it's all, pretty much all part of the plan already. You already have a really good plan.
We have an extensive memo from Nate in our packets. I would invite Nate, if you want to, to come up and just give the Reader's Digest. We don't need to have the whole thing, chapter, verse, but if you wanna briefly summarize that, it would be great, I think.
Bear with me, I stepped on a stick wrong today, which is showing my age. I step on sticks wrong, and I can't walk for days.
Better than Legos, they'll do you, eh?
Luckily, I'm past the Legos in my house. Yeah, again, my name is Nate McLaughlin. I have met most of you. For those who I haven't, I work with Woodard and Kern, and who's the operator of your sewer system, and I've been working with the town on their wastewater infrastructure projects for probably the better part of 17 years now. So in a real summarized version, the project Rick's talking about is sewer extension from Route 90 along Route 1 to Tropical Nails, which I believe is 197 Commercial Street. As Rick said, we designed that project a couple of years back in response to the needs for sewer at the Blue House. Those needs changed, so we shelved the project at that time, sort of waiting for a new driver to come along and move that project forward. The town has been investing in this project for some time, and I think this is just the natural progression of that planning. Cost-wise, we estimate that the construction phase of the project would be $268,000. It's typical for the town to request full-time inspection from Woodard and Kern to oversee the project, to make sure it's being built in accordance with the plans and specifications we pulled together, so that, I estimate, to be an additional $25,000. Total project cost, $293,000. So the rest of this memo goes on to discuss where that money would come from. And we looked at the several pots of money, if you will, that we often look towards to fund sewer projects. Here in town, you've got your day-to-day wastewater operating budget. This is not a planned expenditure in this fiscal year, so it was not included in the wastewater budget, and there aren't funds in your day-to-day fund for that. So we sort of disregard that. We look at your TIF district, your Route 1 Tax Increment Financing District, which the town has used for a number of projects over the years. Unfortunately, this project sits geographically outside the boundaries of the TIF, so we also had to disregard that. So then we look at the capital improvement plan, which is what Rick mentioned just a moment ago, and speak to that a little bit. Several years ago, the town had some debt expire. What we did at that time, working with Ginny at the time, and now Megan, is to really take those funds and build a capital reserve account that, in essence, we look at replacement of all mechanical equipment in the coming years. Your system was constructed, completion 1992, I believe, so we're just about 25 years old, which is what we would consider to be the useful life of mechanical equipment in a wastewater environment. So as you, as you look each year in the wastewater budget we put forward, we revisit that capital improvement plan, we update it for a five-year projection, and it really, as the concern is out there, do we have enough money to cover replacement of, you know, pumps and controls and instrumentation in our system, or do we have enough money in there to cover the things that might come up? There's more than adequate funds in that account for that. You folks have done a really nice job, and to give you the perspective, I work with a lot of towns, and you're way ahead of the curve on the funding and the planning that you're putting forward to replace your infrastructure. But really, that plan is meant for the replacement of your existing assets, and so we really wouldn't want to dip into that fund for things like sewer extensions. So really, the last thing that we looked at, and this kind of gets to the punchline here, is you have what's called the wastewater investment account. It's a fund that was established, I believe, in 1992, although I was a sophomore in high school. So, and it was established when the sewer was completed to just protect the town and cover you in the event of things coming up in your, in your sewer system. It has sat, to the best of my knowledge and Megan's knowledge, untouched since then. And, you know, really, it would, it's nice to have money in an account to protect you and provide that buffer, but I would say, really, the planning that's been done with the CIP has replaced entirely the need to keep money in that 25-year-old wastewater investment fund. So the recommendation that this memo makes is to use those funds within your sewer system for a project that has benefit to the town, and certainly, this sewer extension on Route 1 would qualify for that. And really, when we, when we look at sewer extensions, you know, we look at really four things, you know, does it serve the need of existing business? Does it promote economic development? Is it affordable to the community? And is it part of a long-term plan? And I think, really, here, we hit all of those points. So I, you have the money to pay for it, you have a property that needs sewer to expand their business, you have other properties, or one other large undeveloped parcel behind there, that I hear a lot of rumor about what some of the development potential might be there. So I think your, your timing is really, is good for this project to now move forward.
Any questions for Nate?
I have a quick one. Do you also do work for the town of Camden?
I do not, no.
Okay. Because my, at some point, and maybe it's not the right time for it, but I, just the costs that will be coming down for upgrades to Camden's wastewater system is my only concern with this whole project. It's, you know, the money's there, it seems to make sense, it's gonna help a lot of people out, there's a lot of good that could come of it. The only concern that I have is I don't know what the costs will, our share of it anyway will be from upgrading to following to DEP regulations for the Camden wastewater treatment plant. That's the only, do we have any numbers on that, or?
I don't think we do yet, as I recall.
They were working on it.
They were gonna have a report and call us in when they had their report, so it could be presented to both boards, but.
It's not, it's, you know, there's no firm numbers yet, but it's gonna be extensive, and this little bit of money will not answer that need, I don't believe. I think it'll take a whole, I mean, Nate will be involved, we'll be involved. It will take a whole funding package that will have to get developed for Camden and for us.
I guess I just view 300,000 as not a little bit of money.
You're talking about.
Compared to the project there.
The project you're talking about, many millions of dollars, many, many millions.
That's why I'm concerned.
So there would be a funding package that would be, you know, I'm not sure how that would be. Nate has a better understanding of how.
We're gonna have some debt retire before then, as well, so that retired, that will help us make our portion of that bond payment.
And it's still.
Confident in that timeline?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're still a couple of years away, I believe.
And there are provisions within your inter-local agreement with Camden that dictate the percentage of funds that you would be obligated to for upgrades that they're gonna do, and whether or not that upgrade is necessary because of the flow that they receive from Rockport. So I think at that, when they have more of a plan that can be evaluated as to what they're doing, the costs and the whys, then at that time, you know, we'll evaluate for the town what your obligations are.
Nate, you talked about the four points that you, that you looked to hit, and this being part of a long-term plan. Can you provide me with a little background about the long-term plans, and if possible, just even, you know, qualitative commentary on the hierarchy of those plans, the way in which this might be the best use of these funds, as opposed to another conceptual extension in another place?
Sure, absolutely. So for the last several years, we've looked at basically the entire Route 1 unsuared corridor, and we've broken into four sections. You have Route 1, just going from south to north. You have Route 1 South, which is from basically the hospital to the bowling alley, and these are around drainage areas and where you'd locate pump stations to make reasonable-sized projects, reasonable. Route 1 Central, which is the bowling alley to Seelight Lane, and then what we called at the time Route 1 North, which was from Seelight Lane to Elwood Avenue, and really, because that was your unsuared gap. So that was south, central, and north. And then what I've always called Route 90 North, it's really Route 1 north of Route 90. And Route 1 North was completed year before last, and that project was driven by two users that needed sewer, and we looked at their need and the workers that they employ to go and get some grant funding. And so that drove that project, and so we're really looking at how can we move these projects forward opportunistically? We've been trying to plan through Jamie's office, how is the, what's the plan for the remainder of the unsuared area, the south and central, and looking at some funding sources that are out there for maybe some economic development purposes. But we're still in the planning stages of that. This Route 1 north of 90 is now another opportunistic project, where we've, we've got the design done, it seems that we've got the users with the need, and it seems like the money's there.
And to add to that, you know, in one of the workshops we had a couple of years ago with, with Bill Napower, who was with McKed, or whatever they call that organization now, he was working with the town to help, help us get basically shovel-ready projects ready in case a grant were to become available. And so we did that with this project then, and now, as Nate said, we've had users come forward and kind of the squeaky wheel getting the grease, we're ready to go, and so it seems reasonable.
Could you fill me in on, what was that grant that we got awarded when we did the last sewer extension pass fresh off the farm?
It was a CDBG grant, which Fresh Off the Farm applied for because it was, they needed sewer to maintain, they had a sewer septic system that was close to failure, they couldn't expand at all, and in order to retain jobs, and that's the purpose of the grant, was to retain a certain number of jobs at, at or below a certain income level or something like that, and they applied for the grant through the town, we got the grant, and the grant was applied to the cost of the sewer, so we ended up having to bond less than the voters authorized. I don't know that that's an option here, particularly time-wise, because that process does.
That was my two questions. One, is that an acceptable thing to apply to for here, and can we do it retroactively? Because they're on a time-sensitive thing, and I don't know how that works.
No, on the retroactive.
And the amount of work it takes, it, CBGG grant takes, Jamie can probably talk more about, both of you can, but the amount of work it takes for a CBGG grant is pretty extensive, and it, it does take many months to get approval, and you can't, you can't move forward until you get that approval.
Right.
And the, the last one, it was a fairly significant percentage of the total cost of the project, as I recall. of the project, as I recall. It wasn't fifty percent or anything like that. It was, it was...
It was close.
It was not inconsequential.
It was a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar grant, and I, I think your overall project cost ended up being right around eight-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So it wasn't insignificant.
And so the, the numbers were higher in general. So, and I, I have no idea whether the employment issue would come up in this case or not. But even if it did, as, as you say, the, the timing of it is...
And the number of new employees would be minimal.
And we aren't, in this case, in that previous case, we had to go to the voter, voters for bond authority. And we're looking at not having to do that with this one.
And, and, and CDVG operates on a, a calendar year for their funding. So we, we're, it's a, for the particular program we went after at the time, it is a, a rolling application period. But when, when you get to the end of their calendar year, their money is...
I just have to say that well put together, well reasoned, led us through the, the process and cogent memo. So thank you.
Okay, we have, I think all of Megan's input is in this memo, basically. And Nate has gone through that. We do have some of the property owners here. Does anybody wish to make a comment before we move on to a motion discussion?
We have Bill.
Oh, we have Bill. Give us an update on...
Dr. Lane, to you.
I'm gonna actually utilize Nate's plan.
Hey, it's a pleasure.
Not if you approve it.
Okay, it's...
You guys have seen the plan, so I'm gonna orient it more for the audience, if that's okay. Good evening. I'm Bill Lane with Gartland Horuski Engineering and Survey. And to make this a shorter request, I'm here to act as the, part of the squeak of the squeaky wheel and representing Justin and Tiffany Ford, who are here, who are coming forward in short order with a proposal to first request a sewer connection for their existing business at one ninety-five Commercial Street. And then in very short order, they would like to bring forward an application to the planning board for a laundry building at that location, not a, associated with the business, not a public laundromat, but to, to support that growing business of their rental property management. So that facility would need an acceptable means of disposing of its wastewater and the onsite wastewater disposal system, and the need to probably utilize that wastewater disposal area for other purposes on the property are time-critical to being presented to the planning board in time to get built for next year's rental season. That having been said, we, we had come up with a concept plan, and if the same configuration with the existing plan resolves the same objective, I think that there's no, no dog in the fight for, for Justin and Tiffany, so long as there's adequate assurance to the planning board that we will be built and available to connect. And so hopefully, that could be massaged with, between the wastewater commissioners and Jamie to convey that information to the, to the planning board. So it's an adequate finding on their part that we do have adequate wastewater disposal when we bring that application forward.
Can I speak to timing?
Sure.
I think that's...
Just stay up there.
It was a stick. I stepped on a stick.
You gotta make up a better story than that.
It's not, it's not. My wife had to drive down the road and get my car to come pick me up. It was embarrassing. But, so really, if, if this were to move forward on a expedited path, what, the way I would see it occurring is, we have the design largely done. The one piece that's not done is the front-end specifications that we have to put together before we put it out on the street for contractors. But that could occur over the early winter. We would open bids. The, the reason we try to do that is it's a favorable bidding climate when contractors are trying to line up their work for the following year. And, and so really get to a point where we've got a, a contractor on board and contracts signed early enough in the spring that they're ready to mobilize to the site and do the work as soon as weather and site conditions allow. Sometimes we run into things with road postings if their pit where they get their materials are, are far enough. But, but really, it's, I see it as no greater than a thirty-day job for a contractor. And so if, if they could get started April first, the sewer would be ready for Mr. Ford on May first.
I have a question. That additional design, is that rolled, is that part of this total two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand?
Yes, sir.
It is?
Yep.
And that was in the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand or the twenty-five thousand?
It, it's actually in, in, I should have been clear. It's actually in the, the money that was already appropriated when we did the design. We haven't billed the full amount. There's a, a small amount remaining to finish that piece and then also represent the town through the bidding period of when the plans go out on the street and contractors are asking questions.
That jives with what you know?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll see in your packet also, there's two letters of support from property owners.
Identical letters.
So you have two letters of support from also other property owners along that route.
Anybody have any further questions for Nate or for Bill or for Megan, for that matter?
And Megan came all this way. She should, she should ask her a question anyways.
She's probably happy to sit there.
I guess I have another question.
Okay.
Anybody wanna help defer some of this cost? No, seriously, I mean, you were anticipating paying something. Obviously, it's difficult to say, would you like to give us some money? Because no, you don't wanna give us your money. But we've got, I'm, I'm just pretty sensitive to what is going to be a very large-scale cost coming down with our relationship with Camden and their wastewater treatment facility. And so I know it's gonna be something we address in the future, but every little bit does seem to help. Who thinks, too?
Can I interrupt?
Are we allowed to do that?
No, you're not allowed to do that.
Why not?
Because, because for one thing, that was, the potential of that offer would have been appropriate when they were saying, hey, we need this in a real hurry, and we'd like to jump across the street with a smaller capacity and only take care of us. At that point, because it falls outside of the plan, as you ticked off on the, on the four things, this is part of our, our bigger, larger, you know, fifty-year plan. And, and to, I won't characterize it, to ask that question, I think is, is, is out of line because it's, it, it's, it's what we're gonna do anyway at some point. And now we're facing it, and it's an incremental extension, and, and it's, it's appropriate for the commu, well, off the community, for the users to take care of it the same way that all the rest of the sewer system was. So there's nothing, there's nothing extraordinary about this that would put any sort of pressure on the immediate benefactors to cough up more than what would normally be their, their contribution towards this.
And the normal contribution is user fee.
User fee.
Impact fee.
We can take a proactive approach on the Camden expansion and start sending money aside for that. But without knowing, knowing what their expansion costs are and what our portion of that is, I mean, we can start, but I don't know how much we need.
I would just follow up to say that, I mean, it's, I understand that it seems as though there is a small number of individuals who has a, a greatest benefit from this. But this project benefits more than the people in this room.
Mm-hmm.
And it's an appropriate use of public funds.
I'm just trying to see if we can't minimize the use of public funds. Just seeing if there was an opportunity there.
Well, there will be. When they, when the new users hook on, they will pay a connection fee. They'll pay a buy-in fee to sort of, you know, hold harmless the, the users who've been paying for the system for twenty-five years. So there will be some upfront fees that they will have to pay as per the ordinance.
And this is a little piece of the economic engine.
There, the plan that Mr. Lane provided to us at the last meeting was one which, if had we approved, that would have been one that the user would have had to pay for by our ordinance because it wasn't part of our plan. Any user, or anybody who's not on the sewer system has the right to come to the town and say, I wanna hook up, and I'll pay for the, for the, all the hookup expenses. That's in our ordinance. They could do that. But this, doing it this way is a little bit different and, and is able to, as Jeff said, benefit more than just the one user.
And, and really, when you, when you look at the long-term plan, what the, the piece that I, I don't think would look good for any of us is if, if, if they went forward with the extension of Pleasant Street like they were planning, it, it really eliminates the ability to, to connect all those properties in from Route Ninety up to the top of the hill. And then if something, you know, happens in that development, then we're still running the sewer up there potentially anyway. And so now we're kinda coming at the same point for two, from two perspectives. And people say, you didn't plan this out, you didn't... And so it really is part of, I think, the long, longer-term vision of just infrastructure on Route One, sewer and water, promoting economic development. And, and I think your question's reasonable to ask. I, I think it does also set a little bit of bad precedent that we're gonna be asking property owners for money when we do a infrastructure expansion. And that's not typically that.
Nope. And I agree with all that. The only reason that I brought it up is we were asked to bring it up. We were asked to expedite it. So I just figured I'd ask a question. It's all good. It's all good. Just figured I'd ask the question.
Bottom line is, we have to follow our ordinance.
And it says we can't accept money from people?
Well, it says that in this, in this type of sewer extension, that there isn't necessarily, the user is not responsible for the construction. Whereas the other type that he presented to us last time, if that's all we did, then they would have been totally responsible for the construction.
No, I get that.
So Mr. Chairman in charge of vice, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the town manager to develop bid documents and send them out when the timing is right to get the most response, best price, and begin the Route One sewer extension project as soon as weather permits in the spring of two thousand and seventeen.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
By way of discussion, I'm just a preview for your November twenty-eighth workshop as wastewater commissioners. And in some sympathy to Owen's perspective and of many people in the community that share that perspective, that where's the contribution? The select board or the wastewater commissioners still working on a policy for those connection fees. And it's been amended a few times recently, but not applied in a uniform way recently. So that we could firm up the policy for the buy-in fees as we move ahead. And I think that would help gain the confidence of the, the people with the mindset that you are bringing to the table.
I just have one final question, promise, maybe. The wastewater investment accounts is specific to projects like this. The capital improvement plan monies that were talked about here is not specific to expansion. It's specific to maintenance. However, if we so chose...
Not just maintenance, but also replacement.
Right.
Infrastructure.
But if we so chose, if we happen to, we could take money out of that capital improvement plan for this? It's not like the TIF one where we're prohibited to because it's a...
I read that as, as we can't, as opposed to ill-advised.
Well, I think, I think the capital improvement plan is probably ill-advised. I think, I think you're right. If we wanted to, we could because, but the capital improvement plan, I mean, we have a laundry list of Main Sport Pump Station and the Romaha Pump Station and, and certain areas where we know these...
But I mean, so long as the funding is in the other account, how could we justify going to the capital improvement?
Right, right. I agree. That's why I say it's ill-advised. I think that was Owen's question.
But I mean, even if we thought it was a good idea.
And I guess the, the end portion of that thought process was simply with the wastewater monies, I'm making an assumption that all of that money, if we so chose, though we'll do a financial plan for the Camden thing, that we could not use the capital improvement plan funds to defer any of those costs. We could only use the wastewater investment accounts. So the question was only so far as to say, are we leaving money in a, in an account where we have more flexibility to help pay for the Camden cost down the road? And I get it, we'll put a package together versus...
I think, I think the Camden package, and anybody feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, not that anybody has ever not felt free to do that.
You're talking like me.
The, the Camden project is gonna be substantial. There'll be, there'll be bonding. And to pay our part of that will likely require some adjustment of our fees. As Megan said, we do have some debt coming off the books, so that will help because some of those debt payments will go away. So we'll have to look at that in toto when it comes down the road. And I don't think that any of these accounts that we have right now are gonna really help us too much with that, just based on the amounts that are there. I, I look at the wastewater investment account as kind of the, the unassigned fund balance for wastewater. So that if we have a surplus one year, that's where it's gonna end up. If we have to draw from it because we're a little short one year, and we have done that in the past, we have had to draw from that occasionally, not very much, but...
But even funding this project, you're still gonna have over a hundred thousand dollars in those investment accounts. So you're not draining it. I mean, if you have to replace a pump, that money will be there to replace the pump. So I don't, I don't think it's a big concern. And we can budget to split the deposits back into that if we wanna go back.
Yeah, we'll have the, the wastewater budget process next spring when this project is probably pretty well done and we'll know what the expenses are. We can then examine it and see if we need to, to reassign.
So there's four hundred something in there now?
Three eighty.
Three eighty.
Three eighty, yeah. And that accrued over what period of time? Or was it, was it a lump sum and then...
I don't know what the initial investment was, but it's currently earning one point two-five percent.
But, but I guess what I'm really asking is, it was a single event, and then it has been accruing some amount of interest since then. We haven't, we have continued to add to it.
It was money left over from the initial, from the initial...
The last part of his question was, have we added more money to that account?
Not that I know of.
So it has not been actively set aside for this purpose? It was done so on one occasion?
And I think, over the years, I think we probably have drawn some from it and taken and added a little bit to it, just in the, in the year-end type stuff. If we had a year where we were a little short or something, that money was there. But I think it was minimum, it wasn't anywhere near the amount that we're talking about now.
Well, I mean, to the extent that it is, is about to prove very helpful, I think we should replenish those funds.
Yeah. I think when we get, when we get to...
Perhaps not all of them.
Yeah, when we get to the budget, we can look at that and say, well, okay, let's, let's start working on it slowly. We won't replenish it all at once, I don't believe.
Right.
We can certainly look to, it's, it's all part of prudent funding so that we don't get caught. Because the wastewater system is prone to, I mean, we could have a gigantic problem any day out there requiring a huge expenditure. Luckily, we have the CIP money, and we have this money there to, and we wanna continue to, to move forward with that, not having to go to the voters for an emergency bond or something like that.
Right. In ninety-two, the, the town was new to the wastewater operations game. And so I, it was probably very appropriate and prudent at that time to have a cushion sitting there for a, a group of people that were figuring out what it costs to maintain and operate a sewer system. I, I think that the need today, where you're twenty-five years into your planning and, and budgeting, and now with this capital improvement plan completely replaces that nineteen ninety-two need for when the budget was established.
Okay. We have the motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? If not, call for the vote. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That's a four-nothing unanimous vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Bill, continue yet?
No. Okay. We now go to unfinished business.
We need to close.
Oh, that's right, yes.
I moved to close as wastewater commissioners and the select board.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close wastewater. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're back as select board.
Where, where are these people, the Loaf people? Is that, did they just buy the big house, break down the road?
Must have, yeah.
So they're, okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Nate. Onto unfinished business. The first item under unfinished business is a continued discussion regarding solar panels on the town office building. And I will let Rick introduce that. And I don't know whether we have the...
No. Yes, let me get back to that. We have here John Lott from, from Revision Energy. Let me just get to my comments here. Sorry. Yes. As you, as you're aware, we've been working on this for quite, quite, quite a while. You have in your packet a, a breakdown of what the, basically what the offer is, how it will work. The contract has gone off to the attorney, for our attorney to look at, and they're... and they're doing some last-minute tweaking, as I note in my comments. It's basically a boilerplate contract that's been reviewed by a number of different towns over the, over the past year, a year, John? The, the contract...
DPA is longer than that.
Yeah, longer than, I would say this is probably, I don't know, at least a three-year development.
So it's, that contract, the contract has gone on, has been looked at by a bunch of municipal attorneys over the years, has been revised several times. I think our attorney has some minor tweaks that he would like to make to it. But the, the bottom line is, the numbers and the information you see in your packet is what we'll be looking at going forward. The decision you need to make is which of the three plans you'd prefer. You have three different options there of how, I mean, my assumption is that the goal is for us to own these, the solar array at the end of six years, going into the seventh year, because that's where the real benefit is for us. That's my assumption, I mean, I'm making that, but if, you, you need to decide that. And then which is, which plan you would like to, which plan you would like to take. And there's various pluses and minuses in each one of the plans that's in, in your packet, you can review that. But it varies in price of eleven cents per kilowatt hour to seventeen and a half cents per kilowatt hour. We're currently buying electricity at sixteen point four five cents per kilowatt hour. So, you know, two of the plans are less than we're currently spending. As I think I noted in here, I think I put it in your backup information. But I spoke to, by email, I spoke to the person from the, the school, from the high school, that they have a rather large array of panels on the school that Revision Energy put up just last year, John? Was it in 2015?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think it was in 2015.
That was the expansion, wasn't it? Because you had some, they had some on there.
Those were actually, that array was actually removed from the roof. It was actually relocated to over by the athletic fields.
Yeah.
It's on that concession stand.
Yeah, that's the old array. Gotcha.
Relocated.
Okay.
And then also, I have a friend that is the manager, the, the town manager in Durham, New Hampshire. And I reached out to Todd and he is, I think I sent you those emails, I think that's what it came in as. And they have a, quite a series of arrays that they've done, just the way John has, has suggested for us, is to try it, see how we like them, and then move to the next phase of putting up more solar panels. If we are, if we're happy with the way it works, then we can continue to move forward. Durham, New Hampshire started that way. And as you can see, you saw from the email and you can see in their qualification package, Durham has quite an extensive array of, of solar panels. I, I can't even begin to estimate how many kilowatt hours of stuff that they're producing.
It's a seven thou, seven hundred and sixty-six kilowatt array. And this roof here, we're looking at twenty-four.
Twenty-four, right. So, and one of the questions I asked Todd was, did they do what they said they were gonna do? Is it performing the way they, that you think it's performing? And would you recommend them? And he said, yes, they, they did above and beyond what they, what he expected them to do and what they said they would do. It's performing better than expected and they've, he'd recommend them. He said, we continue to put up more arrays. I think they have four or five different projects that they've done to get to that level. So this, to me, this is a, a, a chance for the town to take, to, to get out in front of this, put the array up on, as John describes it, as we have a, a, an oil well on our roof potentially. It's the equivalent of an oil well on our roof. It's just sitting there not producing what it should be producing. And it, it can produce enough, it'll produce, that roof itself will produce about eighty percent of our total power needs.
Does anybody have any questions for, for John or... Uh, I do, actually. And maybe for Rick too, I'm not sure. Been talking to some other people in the industry. And the way I understand it, with the PPA agreement, we will buy the power that the array generates from you folks at, at whatever rate we decide. If we are producing more power than we use at any given time, then the excess power goes back out into the grid and we get an offset from CMP and the net metering scheme.
You got a credit.
A credit, yeah.
But truth be told, it all goes straight to the grid. It doesn't... Nope, that's not true. So you, the, the building where it is connected actually has access to the electricity first.
Oh, but it's, so my question last time about the power outage was just the failsafe for feeding uncontrolled power back in?
Correct. A power outage will trigger the inverter to turn off.
Thank you, okay. My mistake.
But my question is, what that, what does that credit amount to? Because I'm, from what I'm hearing, it's not the whole sixteen cents. There's a demand charge that's involved and some other delivery charges and things like that, so... So my question is, when we feed power back into the grid, what will that credit be that we get from CMP per kilowatt hour?
So the way the, the, the rules currently are written is the value of that solar energy credit, any excess power that goes back to the grid when it goes through your meter, the value of that energy credit will be the sum of the transmission and delivery charge, which in this case is about five point nine cents a kilowatt hour. I have the exact amount here, it's a longer decimal. And then also the supply charge, which for the town office currently is at ten point four nine cents a kilowatt hour. So you take those two charges, it's the sum of those and that is the value of the credit.
Okay, so the demand charge is pretty small then?
In this situation, correct.
Half a cent or something like that?
Demand charge is, it's, it's five point nine cents.
Five point nine or...
No, that was, that was the T and D you said was...
Transmission delivery is five point nine five six four cents.
Yeah.
And I could show you, I have an electric bill copy here. So I got these wrong. So the, the ten point four nine is the cost of the power, the five point nine is the transmission and delivery.
Right. Does that, do those two numbers add up to our sixteen cents or is there...
Sixteen point three nine.
I, I had, thought I had understood there was a demand charge in there somewhere that was not...
On that, on that account, um, kilowatt hours. Well, in terms of the, demand charges are independent of any kind of net billing arrangement. They're kind of, solar can't offset demand charges.
That, right, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to figure out how much they are.
So the value of the credit is essentially only the transmission and delivery cost plus the supply.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's what currently, for every kilowatt hour that is used at the town office, that's what it's costing the town for that kilowatt hour.
Okay.
Would we likely be on a demand meter on...
On that meter, I don't believe you are.
Yeah, it wouldn't seem like we would.
But you are like the, you know, there's other accounts that you have that, that are possibly on that, but I believe that the town office is not.
So it sounds like the offset then is pretty close to the sixteen, if not exactly the sixteen cents.
It should be, the sum of those numbers, I'm quite certain.
But we're only gonna be, currently, we'll only be producing about eighty percent of our...
Yeah, there's no...
There's no export to any of the other...
Expectation of ever actually receiving this credit until, unless and until we added more array.
Well, no, no.
No, because we will on Saturdays and Sundays when nobody's there.
Saturdays and Sundays when the office is closed, if the sun's shining, you could generate an excess. That'll then go on your account. The way the rules are written is you have, essentially it's thirteen months of that credit can roll. So if you make excess power in June, when we have the most sun, you can theoretically use those credits up in, in the middle of the winter when we don't have as much sun.
Got it.
And with the array only covering about roughly seventy... It's actually seventy, I want to say seventy-four percent, but I have the... Of the roof? No, of the load. The load. Yeah. I have that written down somewhere here. Here it is, it's seventy-three percent of the annual electric load at that town office. So there's, everything that essentially gets exported will get gobbled up fairly soon through, through next month's bill.
And could you real quickly and concisely go over our three options, which are the competitive standard and flat rate plans?
I think an important way to start is to look at the, you know, at the end, you know, even looking at forty-year costs when you compare the three options, they're pretty close to the same. If you jump all the way to twenty-five year, the, the overall savings to the town is roughly the same. And let me back up one step. So there's, there's three offerings that are available. This competitive rate where we'll be able to offer you electricity at eleven cents a kilowatt hour. So lots of savings right out of the gates because we're able to sell you power at a much better rate than you're currently. That rate is designed, there will be an escalator that's built into that rate. And that's listed on, there's a chart there on page two of the proposal that shows that after the first two years, the rate will go up two percent. And this is a, you know, this is a good option for a town that wants to essentially have immediate savings right out of the gates with the difference in terms of what we can offer versus what you're currently getting power, electricity for. The, at year seven, there is a, a rate increase of eight cents a kilowatt hour. So that savings, you know, at year seven, you're going to see that, that increase at that point in time. And we've mapped that out on the rate schedule, so you can kind of see how does that work out. You'll notice that the buyout for that option is the highest of the three at forty-one thousand twenty-two dollars. So by taking the, the extra savings, what you're doing is, is creating a little bit higher of a buyout. And then the middle option, which is the standard rate essentially, is going to give you, in the beginning, electricity at fifteen and a half cents a kilowatt hour, which is still below what you're currently paying. So that still is a financial winner right out of the gates for the town. Because you're paying a little bit more for that electricity, essentially what you're doing is, is you're, is you're putting some of that money towards the buyout. And then therefore, the buyout sum in year seven is only at thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. And then the third option is the flat rate, which essentially says, we're gonna, you're gonna lock in to this fixed rate for the next twenty years. And what you're doing on that option is you're banking on the price of electricity is going to steadily climb over time. And eventually, this electricity will become less money. And you can see on the chart that we did here on Appendix A that you can kind of predict where, where will that point be? On the first section of that is the actual utility rates that you're currently paying. So column one is the year. Column two is the amount of electricity that this array will produce. In its first year, it'll produce twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four kilowatt hours per year. You can see that number gets smaller because we're, we're derating the system. It's going to lose a little bit of efficiency over time and we've taken that into account over the forty years. And then the utility rate, if we go with, essentially, there, there's a number of ways that you can look at this, but the United States Energy Information Administration has put out studies as to what they think utility rates will be. And we've pegged this rate to that study. I can provide a copy of that if anybody wants to see that. And the number we've gone with is a two point five percent escalator, which we feel is fairly conservative. And you can see over time, you know, based on that two point five escalator, electricity towards the flat rate of seventeen and a half cents, that begins to happen in year four. You know, that, that electricity will start to get more expensive than, than that based on historical inflation of electricity. In, in the end, the numbers really, when you start to really look at the savings to the town, there's, there's really, there's not a lot different between these three plans in all reality. I think what you're really choosing is, is the buyout amount. Do you wanna be able to have that number be smaller or larger? Some nonprofits we work with have a hard time fundraising that money, so they might be more attracted to the, to the smaller buyout. And those are, those are the three options that we currently are offering.
I presume that we're gonna fund this buyout as part of the capital improvement plan.
Right, we'd come up with a depository, an annual depository reserve for, so that it would, whichever plan you decided, we would be depositing an amount of money as part of a budget, CIP budget. And it comes out, I, I did the math, it comes out like six thousand dollars a year for the middle plan. A little more than six thousand bucks a year.
Question on the, the cumulative savings columns.
Mm-hmm.
If we buy this thing out at year seven, then those, all those kilowatt hour rates from that point on are just, are immaterial, aren't they?
Yes, so the column to the left there, which just says, um, price per kilowatt hour.
Right.
That's if you don't decide to buy the project out. What happens if you do nothing essentially and just keep buying power from the power purchase agreement? That's what that column represents in terms of what the cost of electricity would be to the town. In regards to the cumulative savings, let's pick one that you wanna look at. You can do the standard offer right down the middle on that one. Uh, standard offer, you know, the first year, the, it's gonna save the town two hundred and seventy-four dollars. You know, cumulatively adding on to that, year two, six hundred and sixty-six. And then when we get to year six, the savings to the town is two thousand five hundred and forty, but then you have to buy the project. So then the project goes into the negative for the next five years until the savings, because now you're not paying us for the electricity. All of that savings is now going essentially to pay off you purchasing the array. And then at year twelve, you emerge back into the positive for the life of the project.
But that savings really doesn't depend on the kilowatt hour rates in that column at that point. And once we buy the system, that depends on the prevailing rate.
Well, he's, he's looking at a payback of the amortization. And he's looking at amortizing that over the...
I understand that.
Power that you're no longer paying for. We could, we could think of it differently.
But my, my point is that the, for example, year ten, it says eighteen sixteen in the, but that number doesn't mean anything once we've bought the system.
But we don't, but you don't have to buy the system.
Right, we don't have to buy the system.
And the only way to...
But he's assuming that we do buy the system in the cumulative column.
The only way to make the comparison is you get...
Understood.
You, you gotta have a number to put in there to make a comparison.
Right.
Well, we know in year ten, that's the one you referred to just now, right?
Yeah.
Year, we estimate the system will make twenty-seven thousand six hundred and nineteen kilowatt hours per year.
Right.
That's energy that's gonna be produced on the roof.
Right.
And if you're not buying that energy from the utility company and you're not paying us for that energy at that point in time...
Right.
The, whatever that value is of a kilowatt hour at that year is going to be...
Right, and I guess that's my point, is that, that we don't know what that value is, it's more likely to be the twenty fifty-four, according to your energy estimate.
Well, in, in column three, right next to that, is what we, we believe electricity at that point in time will be twenty point five four cents a kilowatt hour. And that's based on the two point five percent escalator put out by the U.S. EIA.
Right.
Historically, rates have been a three point seven percent escalation.
So if you use that number, the savings would be actually higher.
It would be higher, that's right.
We're using, yeah, we're using the lower.
So, I mean, we're, we're basically, by doing this, we're betting that retail power prices are not gonna plummet. Because if retail power prices plummet...
Have they ever dropped?
Then we would...
I mean, they must've dropped.
I mean, in, over the course of like a few years, they have. But if you look at the long-term trend of that, it's definitely an upward. And I, and I have a report here that I'm willing to share in terms of, you know, the government's look at what have been historic. And it's based regionally too. This isn't just, you know, this is based on our region, this report.
So I guess I would ask the board and the manager if they have any thoughts on which of these plans?
Standard, yes, buy.
I hear, I hear standard.
Yeah. And, and, and I presume, I'm, I'm just guessing, but the reason I said yes, comma, buy was because, because that would be part of what I would like to see on the plan. I presume that we're all looking to buy it inside of this sixth year.
I liked the flat rate because it was cheaper to buy it out afterwards. However, if we're gonna buy it out afterwards, we don't necessarily realize a huge cost saving.
You're spending more money in the, in the years leading up to the buyout if you take that higher rate. If you're not gonna buy it out, then that rate makes a lot more sense because they... If you're not gonna buy it out, then that rate makes a lot more sense, because they guys, John, you guarantee that forever and ever, for twenty, twenty years, whatever it is.
It feels like forever.
Has anyone, because I looked over all this, had made, you know, my initial assumption, realizing that my assumption now is probably not the best assumption. Did anyone in the town spend more time evaluating these numbers and, and running them, to see, with the buyout option in year seven, which one did make the most sense?
Because you have, it just comes down to a, you know, it just
When, when do you want to spend your money?
Pay it now, pay it later. Because look at years twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and the differences between all three options isn't, isn't really huge.
I mean, I think the key is to look at your, if we're gonna buy it out, then you look at year seven, and the rest of it doesn't matter.
Right, yeah.
Because who knows what the price of electricity will be? And we can, you know, if we get to year seven, and the, you know, price for power out there is ten cents on the market, or something, then we reevaluate, I guess.
So that, I can just do the quick math.
Because I assume the other option could be at year seven. Well, I don't know, I guess I should ask if that's an option, at year seven, if, if the market has changed drastically, and solar power doesn't make any sense anymore, I don't think that's gonna happen, but can we then tell you, oh, the lease is up, take the solar panels off?
No. I believe
We could, by virtue of buying it.
Yes, you could, yeah, by buying it, yes. You are sent, essentially, you're entering a twenty-year agreement with the option to buy out of that agreement.
Okay. So we're obligating to twenty years, or, or we buy them and take them off?
Right.
The standard's looking pretty good now. Yeah.
It seems to
I don't have to go speechify when you do it.
Along the road, option. Do we have a motion?
Uh, yes, I'm, do, do, you got something for me to read?
You got any crazy numbers over there, Rick? Do you want to let us know about?
Did you talk to Megan about this, Rick?
Yeah.
Actually, I was gonna ask. I looked up and she was gone.
So I, I move that we approve the proposed financial structure, as presented by Revision Energy, at the standard rate described in the table on page, it's actually not page two, it's, well, describe the page two of the handout, and to instruct the town manager to come back to the next meeting of the select board with a contract for approval.
Have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion?
So, my only further discussion is, have we communicated with the public appropriately to give people time to come and disagree with us and express their views?
No.
If they disagree with us and want to express their views.
I agree we have not, but I also agree it's defensible up one side and down the other. But, having said that, we have, we won't be, we won't be in a position to sign it until next month, and we should put it on the agenda. We do, we certainly do
This comment was not to not approve this motion. It was to possibly, as an
Yeah, as an addendum.
Well, I think
Make sure that we
The public knows what we're doing, and has an opportunity to comment.
I think in terms of the near term, we're, we're not changing our expenses dramatically.
Agreed.
We are making, we are entering into at least some sort of commitment to buy this thing, and that'll show up in the budget process when we fund
Here's what I'm saying, this was, this has been on my radar screen for like, a week.
Right.
And I'm a select board member, so, I'm
So you, you're a pretty good guess that
Pretty good guess that it's not on a lot of other people's radar screens.
So, point taken, we should
What's the drop dead to get, because the rules change?
The end of the year, I think.
The end of the year.
Yeah, no, but, let me finish my sentence.
Sorry.
So, we should treat this like other decisions, in that we have, we're not making a decision tonight, we're, we're putting it, we're advertising it per se, we're putting it on our agenda for, for the next go-around. And we should feel free to, to talk it up. And, given that Lincolnville, in their infinite wisdom, actually had a group of two-hundred-plus people, all of whom, every single one of whom voted for a similar plan, by getting the word out, we might actually be doing ourselves a favor, rather than a disfavor. So
It's always good for the people
Oh, absolutely, to know what we're doing. So, I think, I think because of the apparent suddenness of this, we should make an extraordinary attempt to let people know.
I think a press release from the manager might be called for. Just send a press release out, saying, Rockport Select Board to discuss solar energy at its, whatever, the next day
To finalize.
You know, November, whatever.
Is it, is there any chance, are we allowed to communicate with the public after they've voted about something like this?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
You mean, after this is, after we've voted on this motion?
No, no, after they have voted on the eighth, to alert people that this is
This is a whole different subject.
No, no, I just want people to know what we're doing. And I know they're gonna be in that room on that day.
Oh, in other words
Talking about a little piece of paper.
I mean, we could, we could have an agenda, we can have agendas available, or something like that, or
What
That's a good question, since we can't even advocate for our own
Right, there's, there's a lot
You could pass something out to them after they voted.
That's all. I mean, I feel like I've walked out of the room and picked up a couple of cards in the past, can, it, might be
Should that be followed up by some sort of specialist meeting devoted specifically to this?
No, I'm perfectly hap, or at least for my part, I'm perfectly happy letting people be, you know, come and bend our ears.
Publicize the fact that it's gonna be on the agenda for the November meeting, and that we are gonna be voting on a contract, and it's accompanied by a press release, and we'll do, we're, we'll do our best, basically, to use all means at our disposal to get the information out to the public.
We have a big sign that says, "Just so you know."
All right, that was a long aside on my only comment prior to
Any further comment on the motion?
This is awesome.
If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote.
Just to address some of your questions about timing, Owen.
Jamie Francoano, once again, from the Planning Development Department.
Specify the middle rate, standard rate.
Tomorrow at ten, I'll be meeting with John's colleague, Jennifer Albee, to prepare an application to the, to CMP, to get the net beatering, net metering relationship started. I'm gonna learn more about this tomorrow. But, that has a timeframe of at least a month, right? Where they could sit on our request, and that's the, the surest thing, from the legal opinions we've found so far, that has to be done by twelve-thirty-one, in order to get in under the current rules. So, in hearing the select board, first you authorized, Rick, to negotiate an agreement two weeks ago. Today, we came to you with the one ingredient that really needed a policy conversation. So we'll have a final agreement for your approval, on the second Wednesday of, second Monday of November.
Right.
The, but will it make sense to submit before then, this request to CMP? And I'd like to get, just bend John's ear on that, too, also. The, the application fee is very small.
Yep.
So there's, there's good reason to, to move ahead with that. But I don't, I don't know whether there are members of the select board who have some concern about
Well, I think before we execute
Making it more final than it is.
Yeah, I, I think, unless there's some way to do it provisionally. If you can do it provisionally, then, then I wouldn't have an issue with it, but I don't, I think we have
Well, what's the downside? To the application to CMP?
There's no, I mean, you could put the application in and not act on it. They're not gonna penalize you or anything, it just, you just wouldn't follow through the application.
It's something we have to do, if we want to go forward, and it's something that doesn't hurt us, except for a thirty-five dollar application fee.
Well, I think it's a couple
It'll be around a hundred fifty?
Yeah, it's about a hundred fifty.
But it, it does get us, it'll, it'll, if we get it in, it will, and get it processed, it will be the best hedge we have against the changes that may be coming in the
And we would recommend the sooner the better, because there's a lot of people doing the same thing
Right. Okay.
Just making sure that issue is not a big surprise to you, when we meet next month.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we agreed to postpone the second item, an unfinished business, so we'll move to new business, acknowledgement of gifts to the town. And, Rick, I have two different lists here, one which
Yeah, there was, I was just looking for that. There was another one added, with, do you have the second list?
I have the one that's on the agenda, that the Cascade, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, right, yeah. Mine's not showing Cascade, though.
Do you think we're doing a good? Yeah.
Yeah, it's on, it's on one copy of the agenda that I have. So, at any rate, the Cascade Foundation donated thirty thousand dollars to the fire department for fifteen sets of new gear for interior firefighters. That's huge.
Wow.
That's a wonderful donation, for them to support the, the fire department.
Did I miss that?
Yeah.
I didn't think
It was, it was only on his
It's on this agenda, but somehow it didn't make it to the other one, I don't know why that is.
And what is the Cascade Foundation, and why are they so awesome?
It's a private individual
Private individual would prefer to
Town of
Wants to remain anonymous, but supports the town in many different ways.
Paid for the
Financially.
For the vestibule.
This is a large one, but they make donations often.
They've made a lot of large ones over the years, so
Not necessarily just to us, to a lot of other
Yes, right, they
Their thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Walmart.com donated fifteen hundred dollars to the fire department for a new Surface Pro Four for training, I don't know what that is.
It's a tablet, I think.
Tablet, yeah.
Okay. And a anonymous donor, donor donated a thousand dollars to the general assistance fund. And thank you to all, I assume
Yep.
Mr. Manager, that they've been appropriately thanked.
They will be.
If, if, certainly, the select board is always willing to sign those letters, and thank people. And, you know, sometimes people think, well, somebody gave a thousand dollars to general assistance fund, it's, doesn't seem like a huge amount, but for somebody, that was a lot of money for somebody to do that, and to, to, to give to their fellow community, so that's terrific. No resignations, we do have a application for the Recreation Committee, from Mr. Barrett Brown. Thank you for waiting so long. If you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium, to endure your grilling from the select board. Barrett is applying to be a member of the Recreation Committee, so if you
He's enthusiastically applying.
Briefly tell us what you'd like to do, and why you're doing it.
I, I don't really have any prepared remarks, but I have been attending the Recreation Committee meetings. I'm a Rockport resident, have been for nineteen years, I'm a business owner in Rockport. I have four kids who've all used the recreation facilities in the town of Rockport, and I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to serve on the committee, and further the interests of the, the community in use of those facilities.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Awesome.
I've shown up for all the meetings.
And you're, you're putting up with him, so that's
And, yeah, he puts up with me, and adds to the conversation, and has shown enthusiasm, and has shown up to these meetings, when he's not even a committee member yet, and has really rounded out our conversations, I think, to a very high degree, and I'm, I'm very happy and enthusiastic about him being approved.
I would be pleased to make a motion to approve the appointment of Barrett Brown as an alternate to the Recreation Committee, with a term expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments?
You're looking to back out?
Yeah, like, two thousand and nineteen, how many years?
Sounds a long way off, but time flies when you're having fun. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Barrett.
Thanks, Barrett. Barrett, wait, are you, you're still on the board for MRC?
Yes.
Are you the chair?
Yes.
Is, still the chair?
Yes.
Just, I want to get that out.
Yes, yes, that's another role.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we now have a presentation regarding the Camden-Rockport Middle School construction options. Thank you all for being so patient.
Well, thank you for putting us on the agenda. So, I'm Will Gartley, a Rockport resident, and with me tonight is Marcia Dietrich, who is also on the CR Middle School Facilities Committee with me, and Superintendent Maria Libby. Back in just a real, brief history, in two thousand and fifteen, in February, the voters rejected a proposal for a new middle school. And when that happened, the school, and Maria, and another group of people, realized that the problem is that the middle school are still there, and we needed to figure out what to do with them. They went around and did a little bit of a listening tour, trying to figure out why that vote wasn't well-received, and realized quickly that it was really a communications issue, that the first committee didn't do a good enough job getting the word out, as to what the problems at the school are, and what all the options were that we looked at, and why we came to the conclusion that a new school was warranted. I was actually on that committee, and, the first committee, I'm on this committee now, also. And I went into that, that first round, thinking to myself, I went to school there, my kids went to school there, my wife taught there. I didn't have in my mind that that building wasn't worth saving. But when I started looking at things differently, as a member of that committee, and at the money that it would take to make the improvements, and all the issues, the long list, the code issues, I definitely changed my mind. And that hasn't changed. But this time, we, we kept some of the old committee, we got new committee members, we got members of the committee on there now, that were very skeptical, that were like me to begin with, that were against that first vote. And we started over. We looked at the entire report, and we decided that we needed to come up with, all right, three options this time. And we need to get that information out there, then the charge of this committee is to come back to the school board, and make a recommendation this fall, as to what we should promote for a vote in two thousand and seventeen, November of two thousand and seventeen. So hopefully you got the information I emailed you. If you don't have it in front of you, I've got a bunch of packets that I could give you as I
Yeah, packets here and there, and there and there.
And I've got plenty, if anybody wants them, and we also have a website that has an incredible amount of information on it.
Thanks, Joe.
So the reason we're here now is to, is to let you know about this packet that we've put together, at the three options that we've developed. And those include, again, a new building option, a renovate option, which would be to remove some of the building, and renovate the remaining, and then also, just a patch option. Keep everything that's there, and go through and make the infrastructure improvements that need to be made, some of the code improvements that need to be made, and just kind of continue to limp along patching. But all three of these have a cost implication, there is a do no, there is not a do-nothing option, we have to do something. And that's what we've tried to spell out in this, this package, to make sure that everybody could see that, and go through it. If you go to the third page, the other thing that we did is outline, in the new renovate and patch options, we had developed a group of standards, things that we were trying to accomplish in the school, the academic excellence, student safety, building and building improvements, and which of those items that we were clearly meeting, in each of the options, a little bit of a matrix for us to go by. And when we did that, we realized that that was another good piece of information to get out there. The bottom of that page has a breakdown of costs, of all three options, so that you can see at the end, what you've spent, and what you end up with after a twenty-year period. And then
Can I ask a question about that?
Yep, absolutely.
In the, what's the significance of the numbers broken down, I see, you know, for Camden under new, fifty-five, fourteen, and thirty-three, thirty-six?
Okay, so what that, that is, is we're looking at what the tax implication would be, per a hundred thousand dollars evaluation, and we're comparing it to the patch. So the patch is
I see.
Fifty-five, fourteen.
Yep.
Then each one of those has an additional cost on top of that.
I got you.
Okay.
From a formatting position, building on what he said, you might want to do the patch first, and do on the other side, at, at, you know
Right.
If you think about it.
Yep.
Actually, if it You flipped it, because it was Flipped it, because it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Because initially it was patch, renovate.
Whatever, I don't feel strongly for whatever it's worth. I wouldn't have asked the question if it didn't.
Which kind of person are you?
Then it.
You get this packet.
Then we go through and kind of explain what, um, each one of those involves. And I think one big thing to recognize on the new is that currently, we have, um, what is it, a hundred and twenty-one, almost a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet of space. And an efficient middle school for the student population we have only really requires eighty-three thousand, four hundred. So there's a lot of square footage there that is not very useful. It's very inefficient, but we're still paying to maintain it, paying to heat it. Um, so that's one of the, the big reasons that, that, um, some of the people on the committee, including me, are definitely leaning towards the newer option, is, is getting to something that, uh, you know, in twenty years, and, and this is a perfect example, the high school is, is getting to be twenty years now. And if you go through that building, it's still a very good facility. And, uh, so if we spend this money on either renovate or patch, in twenty years, we're still going to have a very old facility that needs to be replaced. Whereas if we spend the money now, build the new facility at an efficient size, um, we're still going to have a really good facility in twenty years.
Do you know how far we are from retiring the high school debt?
That's why I brought Maria.
Five years.
Five years, yeah.
And one thing, I, I've probably asked this during the committee meetings, what was our projections for, uh, increase in enrollment?
Yeah, why don't you?
Yeah, please. There's always so many numbers with these conversations.
I know, there are.
Of them sometimes.
We, the current size is three hundred and seventy students, and it's been between three sixty-five and three eighty-five for the past six, five to six years. We expect the numbers to remain in that range for the foreseeable future. And I don't know if other people saw this article that just came out, either in the Bangor or Portland paper about Maine's, uh, demographics and school populations, that they are expecting them to be stable for the foreseeable future across the state of Maine. We know, we're lucky, there's a lot of pressure for, um, enrollment into our district. People move here to go to our schools, and we have a lot of pressure. So we don't have any reason to believe that our numbers are going to go down. We have, if we did a new school, the last time in that project, we had designed it for four hundred students, a slight increase over the number that we currently have, but just to allow for there to be some room for small, modest growth if we had that. But we expect it to be pretty stable. We've looked at birth rates at Penn Bay. We've looked at our populations of kids coming up through, and we have every reason to think we're going to stabilize between three sixty and three eighty.
So the, the, uh, presentation on page three is really wonderful, even if it's reversed. But the one interesting thing is the second line, it says, provide flexible twenty-first century learning spaces. Do people really understand that? Do people appreciate that? I mean, it's, it's, it's very important, but is, is, I would think you'd have a, a hard, you'd have a challenge to flesh that out for, for people who are interested in knowing what that is.
Well, one answer to that is if, in fact, the board decides to move forward with a new project, we will involve the community in the design of that facility. In, during those conversations, there would be opportunities to literally learn what would the classroom space look like? What does that mean to have flexible learning spaces? What would hallways look like? How would we accommodate that? But, you know, that, right now, you know, we have s- rooms designed in, in squares with quarters in between them. And if you came to the school on any given day during class, kids are sprawled everywhere in the building, on staircases, in hallways, sitting on the floor, doing group work and other things. So a lot of the space would be designed, there'd be breakout spaces for kids to work collaboratively in smaller spaces within a classroom. Hallway spaces would be designed to accommodate groups of kids working, um, in, potentially in some of the common space, like in a foyer, there might be areas designed for kids to, you know, just better collaborate. I just read an article, um, in a paper about school design, and they made the walls plexiglass, so kids could write with dry erase markers and erase them. So the, the walls of the buildings could be designed to be usable in that way. So it could mean a lot of different things, um, but certainly a lot different than having all rectangular classrooms with hallways that are straight with doors going off each, yep.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is that, uh, I, when we, when you were here last time and we filmed this, by the way, it's available at the town of Rockport website, um, livestream site.
Yep.
Um, but you didn't delve into that as much as, as I think you might, because, uh, you know, essentially you're saying, hey, give us a preliminary indication of, of what you, what you prefer as an individual or as a body. And, and I think that particular aspect of it is, is larger than just that one line might suggest.
Big point well taken. You'd be surprised how much time we spent trying to figure out which things to expound on and.
Oh, I know.
And whether or not it was getting too much or.
Right.
Not enough to make people read it. And.
Yeah.
So, uh, understood.
Yeah.
We, we did struggle with how much is too much and.
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't all of it, because it's accompanied by a person and who can explain that, but.
Well, that, and we definitely recommend people go into the website, because it has, it has the entire study of the existing school. It has, um, all of the dates of, of public meetings that are coming up, that we're going to still continue to do more outreach. Um, there's definitely a lot of information in there, you know, in addition to what, what we have here. You know, this, there's, there's a lot of data. I mean, this hasn't been, um, taken lightly. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out is after that page three, that has that table on it, we give a brief, um, explanation of, of what we mean by new, renovate and patch. And you'll notice that patch is by far the longest. And the reason for that is, is for us to, to put the numbers together that we have in that page three, we needed to know exactly what was deficient in the school and make sure we could justify the numbers that we, we had here and that they were accurate. And so a lot of time went into working with Oak Point, which was the architectural firm that was, uh, selected to do the investigation on the school. And, um, they did do, um, options for us on, on each of these and what they would look like and what spaces could be eliminated, which ones should be eliminated, and, uh, what things had to be done. And so Keith, who's a facilities manager for the district, also spent a lot of time on this. And so that's why we listed everything in there that needed to be addressed under that patch option. It also helped, you know, our committee understand where we were at and what needed to be done. And I think one thing that you'll notice is that if you look at all those items under patch, very few of them will improve the actual educational experience. It's really patching, um, old stuff and fixing old problems without making educational improvements. And, and that's where my mind got changed.
One of the things, it, it, that, um, the comment you made, Maria, about us being stable, I mean, I, I would like to think that we would see, you know, loss of kids, young people, and loss of kids in our schools is a, a sign of things bad. You know, we need young families. We need people to come into our community in mid-coast. And it's important to, to think that we're, we're building a school for the future and that will drive bringing young families into the mid-coast area, into Camden and Rockport. To me, seeing more young people, e- more school buses picking up kids in the village is a sign of a rebirth. And I think it's, you know, having more and more young people come to Rockport and Camden is a good thing for us, not a, not a bad thing. And I, you know, I, I think if we could get our schools to grow, it's a sign of success for us.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. Most people, I think, assume that enrollments are declining everywhere, because I think you, you hear about the aging population in Maine. And oftentimes, the assumption we're met with is that our enrollments are declining, so how are we accounting for that in a new school? But in fact, that's not happening. I mean, I, I agree with you. If, you know, we, in, in all the schools that we have built recently, the schools have been designed to be able to expand, so like a section of the building is designed so that two classroom spaces could easily be added in this particular area. We would do that again in this building to account for the fact that if we had an explosion in our population, that we could add on a section easily in the design and, and plan for that ahead of time, but not build for it.
Right.
And hope that they will come.
Good, thank you.
One of the biggest objections I heard the first time around was simply the bottom line. Um, and the bottom line here is, is a little lower, but for the new option, but not tremendously so. So I think, you know, the communication piece is really going to be key, because people want to know, you know, if we're spending this much money, what are we buying? And, and so I think the, uh, the number, life cycle cost per year, useful life, is a really good number, that bottom line number you've got there, and that will really help. But, I mean, there are going to be some people out there, that as soon as they see that bottom line, they're going to shut down and not going to see anything else.
The, the big takeaway for is cost differential above minimum over twenty years. For me, that's the big one. It's third from the bottom. So the minimum is your patch option, all the way to the right, right? And it's spelt out in bold.
Yeah.
Over twenty years, the additional cost of this school is seven million dollars. That, to me anyway, when we were, when we were going through the whole thing, because yes, you look at, and I think I've told you all my story. We, we came back to the drawing board, the new numbers were presented. It was roughly twenty-three million and change. And then we came back and it jumped up to twenty-six million and change. And I said, geez, what did you all throw back in there? But that was the cost of rejection in two thousand and fifteen and building in two thousand and eighteen. That's the additional cost of construction over that time difference. So I was, I was concerned. I thought they were throwing things back in, but that's the wait option. As we wait longer, construction cost will increase.
Which is part of the conversation.
Absolutely.
At, the, the first time around, it just was underappreciated.
Yeah. Well, and I think, you know, to a certain extent, as part of your communication program, you go out and you can say thank you to the voters for rejecting last time around, because now we have the opportunity to do something even better. We have the opportunity to look more carefully at things and, and, you know, to come up with something even better.
I thought you were going sarcastic there for a minute.
Oh, no, not at all. I think, because it is some, any, anytime you have something like that, it is an opportunity to come back and reexamine things. And how could we do things better? And how can we come up with something even better with, and, and with a good value to the community and things like that?
So to play devil's advocate on that point, what do you say to the voter who voted against a twenty-five million dollar school a short period of time ago? When they say, I just said no to this, you've brought back a similar sized project with similar specifications, why am I not saying no again?
We said no to borderline twenty-nine million. It was twenty-eight million.
I don't think it's, I, I get the point. And I think that after that vote, when we tried to go around and find out from people why it went down, overwhelmingly, what we heard, when we told them a lot of these facts, was that, well, why didn't you tell us that before the vote? And we heard that an awful lot, that geez, we didn't understand that you were going to have to spend all this money on this, on the existing school if, if we did nothing, if we didn't do a new school.
And had I known, I would have voted yes.
We, we heard that a lot. And that's why this time, we spent a lot more time looking at those three options and trying to understand what they were. Um, we want to make sure everybody understands them. And if overwhelmingly, we hear back something different than we're hoping to hear, then we're going to have to really think hard, because we don't want this to, to fail.
So can you tell us about that?
Do something.
The, the actual hearing process? What, what, what are you doing, uh, in terms of?
Getting the word out?
Sure you're getting in front of the people who voted against it the last time.
So our, our entire committee is going out to different groups, whether it be Rotary, uh, Kiwanis, uh, select boards. We went to Camden a few weeks ago. Um, and then we're also having, so we're trying to hit all of the civic groups, all the public groups that we can get to. And, um, and then we've got three.
Three public hearings. We've had two of them. The third one is this Saturday in Camden at the public library at three o'clock. So we, we did a series of three public forums, all of these meetings. We have the website. On the website, we have a survey. And the survey asks some feedback, just about information, but also asks which of these three options, once you've read the material and, and understand the options, which of the three options do you think is the best investment for our taxpayers? So, and we've had, you know, the, it's been a few days since I've checked, but the last time we checked, we had some sixty respondents who had responded to that question. So between the, and then we had the listening tour and focus group sessions, uh, as well last spring. So we've talked to a lot of people, um, and we've heard pretty consistent feedback in all the different groups that we've talked to as well.
Okay.
And, and in the survey right now, eighty-five percent of people have said that they support a new building. Granted, it's not a huge sample size. We'd love more people to fill out that survey, um, but, you know, we, we're doing a lot.
Yeah.
Could you discuss the, um, capital campaign committee and the fundraising that's potentially going to go along with this?
Yep, to, because we know that it is a high price tag and that will have an impact on taxpayers. And one of the things that, you know, Will mentioned, no matter what, there's going to be an impact on taxpayers. It's kind of like, can we let our wastewater system just fail? Probably not. We have to do something to fix it. It's the same thing with the middle school building. We can't just let it sit there and rot. So we have to do something. So it's going to cost a certain amount of money. We know that it's likely that if we do, I mean, any of the options will cost a lot of money, but a new building would certainly, you know, twenty-six million dollars is a lot of money. We understand the impact. So the school system and a group of community members are both doing what they can to try to help defray some of that cost. And the school has been banking money, much like you talked about tonight, capital improvement plan or wastewater investment fund. The school's been setting aside money that if this project were not on the horizon, when major improvements need to happen, like ventilation systems, we'd be putting in a ventilation system that we would expect to last for twenty or thirty years. Instead, and we've been budgeting for that, but instead of doing that, knowing that there is a possibility the building will get torn down, instead, we've been salvaging old parts from the Rockport Elementary School that got torn down years ago. And we saved parts, literally ventilation pieces. And we've been using those to jury rig systems for the middle school while we wait to determine what's going to happen in the future. So we've been banking some of that money in a capital reserve fund. And we expect to have about a million dollars built up in that fund by the time we go to vote. In addition, there's a group of, um, local residents, uh, who have decided to try to take on a capital campaign for the project. And their goal is to raise about two-point-five million dollars to help further defray the costs. None of those things would be to add anything extra to the project. The board just approved the capital campaign raising money on behalf of the school for the project, not for anything extra. So we really want those two things would potentially be three-point-five million dollars that would potentially would be able to lower the bond um, or pay it off sooner, defray, help defray the cost of taxpayers.
So I know that this is easier, the middle school is easier, because it's only two communities opposed to the high school, which has a crazy formula for, for figuring out things. But two questions. Um, what are the, uh, things that are taken into account for the split between Rockport and Camden? And will those change inside of the, the, uh, the term of a bond? So I mean.
Yes. Those change every single year. The, the split between Camden and Rockport changes every year based on the number of students from Camden and Rockport who attend the school and based on the town's valuations. So there are typically slight shifts in that, not significant shifts, because that, the population of students, you know, might vary by ten students or so. But that has, that plays into the cost sharing as, as does the valuation.
And we just took a hit in terms of valuation, um, for Rockport. Are, is the, uh, fifty-five, fourteen versus sixty-four, oh, eight, is that reflected? Do we know whether that's reflected in our most recent?
It's, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure we use the most updated valuations.
Okay.
For those figures.
And it's not the fifty-five, fourteen, sixty?
Well, that's the base.
It's the second number. Oh, okay.
That, that's the base upon which everything is.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that, that's just indicative of the split all the way through, so.
Yep. And we have to project, so we just used a static split in our projections. It does vary a, a little bit.
Thank you.
Is there any state funding at all, or are we not on any lists, or?
You know, state funding is an interesting question.
I'm sure.
Because the state just opened up a new round of funding on, that, um, applications were available on October first. And the application period closes in April. So the state has, um, reissued new funds for construction projects. Typically, they will fund in any given cycle, which might last six years, six to eight years. They'll fund ten to fifteen schools. On the list that they just had, there were seventy-one schools on the list. We, we were not on there, because it was two thousand and ten, when the list was created. And some of those schools were built. Actually, the top number one school on that list just opened its doors this fall. So it took six years from that funding cycle to open their doors. And they funded, I don't know exactly how many, somewhere in the range of ten to fifteen schools in that round. So we, we are trying to weigh the options. It's, it's unlikely, because we have some basic facilities, such as a gymnasium and a cafeteria, and fairly large classrooms, because the MET building has pretty large classrooms. and fairly large classrooms, because the M E T building has pretty large classrooms, and the old high school had fairly large classrooms. Those things alone put us in a different category than many schools applying for funding, who don't have cafeterias or gymnasiums. We don't think it's very likely we would get funding. We wouldn't find out, if we apply, we wouldn't find out until June of two thousand and seventeen if we made the list. And then, once you're on the list, it takes two more years to get the funding, so it's six to eight years from construction, from like this time. We really have to, the board really has to weigh this question. If we apply for funding, realizing it's highly unlikely we will be in the top ten of the state on that list, we will have just cost two more years, because we won't be able to go out to vote if we apply for funding. We wouldn't go out to vote, because we'd wait on state funding. And if we came to where we expect to come in a low position on that list, and then had to go out to vote again, then it's gonna, we're looking at a project that, changing nothing, is now twenty-eight or twenty-nine million dollars. So we're in a little bit of a bind as to what to do about the state funding question, to be honest with you. And something that we are trying to grapple with and trying to get a little bit more information from the state if we can.
If you wanna ask a question, but just building on that, and that list, you don't always go up.
Correct.
As new schools come in, they reevaluate everything again, so it's not like waiting on the list, we will always get to the top at some point. It's not one of those type of lists.
No, in, in fact, there were seventy-one schools on the last list, and ten to fifteen got funded. And so the other, you know, fifty to sixty schools didn't get funded, and now they have to reapply to find a new place on that list.
Frankly, maybe I'm wrong about this, but given my sense of the relative resources of this community in comparison to the rest of the state, even if this building weren't as old as it is, it would surprise me if we had the greatest need in the state.
We don't.
So I, I mean, it's not an argument not for funding, but it doesn't surprise me at all to hear that we're not, that we are two things. Not in the worst case in the state, and still in an unacceptable place for our communities.
But we have been, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have been benefactors of, beneficiaries of that state money for the high school.
For the high school.
Right, right.
But although they didn't pay for anywhere near the whole.
Oh, no, 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 but, but, so there, there are people in the community for whom that was like, oh, wow, we just, you know, took three million off the, whatever it was.
So the cri, the criticism that I've heard that, that, that hits home a little harder is, is there a way to time this to coincide with?
Debt service dropping off.
Retiring the debt service, and have, have you guys discussed that?
Well, yeah, that's why we're having a capital campaign, and why we've been banking money to help with that overlap. There, there could be, and that's waiting five years. And in five years, we'd be coming back out. And the question is really for the taxpayers, what is the wisest and most prudent economical thing for us to do?
Yeah.
Because in five years, it's gonna be thirty-three million dollars to build the exact same building.
This may seem like semantics, but it's in, the question I find is an interesting one, just from a psychology perspective, which is that, that you, you could assign a cost for retiring that debt today, right, for just getting it done. To be able to, to be able to just take that off the table. We have retired the debt service. It costs this much. You're adding it to the cost of the school, but, but if there's a psychological block for the public, we are, we are not living within our means. By doing this until that service is retired, you could, you could add that to the cost of the school and say, we are starting from a clean slate.
Let me tell you something about that debt service, though, because that's like a little bit of a misnomer at this point in time. Our debt service is about nine-hundred thousand dollars a year at the high school. The state, we were the beneficiaries, Camden and Rockport in particular, at the high school, were beneficiaries of a new rule that was applied this current fiscal year that we're in. And that was that they started giving a subsidy to towns who were minimum-receiving districts who had state-funded construction debt. So that was us at the high school. We have high school debt from a state-funded project, and Camden and Rockport are minimum-receiver schools. So we fell into this very small category around the state, and the state gave us about a seven-hundred thousand dollar subsidy this year that we have enjoyed, and that is why we came to the taxpayers with a four-point-nine percent decrease in our budget this year. So this is the year, like, so we are actually not even paying that debt service. Most of it, the state has reimbursed us for, and that's gonna continue until the debt service retires. So we're actually not even paying.
So that's a good point to get out there.
I, yeah, it is important.
I'd lead with that.
It is important.
That's the first I've ever heard.
So right now, we're paying a little bit of that debt service, but it's only like two-hundred thousand dollars that we're paying, instead of nine-hundred thousand dollars. So that relief, literally, we just felt in this year's budget, that we came with a pretty significant decrease in the budget for that very reason.
So that's a tr, a little bit of a tricky concept, I think, but one that if you can, if you can boil that down, I, I think you'll get distance from that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd put that at the top of the F A Qs. Why don't we wait until debt service is done? Guess what, we don't have as much.
It basically is done, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you're talking two hundred versus.
Can you reimburse for eighty percent of it?
I mean, at the very least, I would love, would have loved to have been able to deliver those responses to the, you know, to the people who, who asked me that, which is not your fault, I haven't been tracking this, but that, whatever the talking points for that are, I think are important.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that is a lesson we've learned that is important, and it's really difficult to try to get all of the information that is important out to all the taxpayers. It's why we've been, you know, trying to get out, to talk to as many people as we can. It's really hard for all these nuances to understand all the different aspects of it by reading something or hearing something. And we've gotten pretty good coverage in the paper as well, that's done a good job explaining the situation. But I think we, you know, if given the opportunity to enable people to understand the situation that we're in, almost everybody we talk to is, comes to the same conclusion. And it's not about, one of the things that you said was that the building is maybe not as, it's not the worst off in the state, but it's not up to our standard. I would say it's not even about the standard. It's not as though we need to have a better facility for our students, therefore we want a new building. It's more about the amount of money that we are gonna pour into a failing facility is not worth the investment. We, as much as anything, if this wasn't an economic argument, we wouldn't be coming to the table. Only for, I mean, maybe in this community, we could argue simply educationally, our kids deserve something better, but this isn't just, I mean, we will get a great educational benefit from doing what we're doing, but it's an economic argument. It's just not a, it's not a good use of money to pour into that facility.
Do I recall that there were some fairly public Camden Select Board opposition to this last time around?
You would recall accurately.
There was opposition mostly to the timing of the vote. Because there was a special election held in February. There was some concern that it wouldn't be well-publicized, and that, and that some people who were away for the winter wouldn't be able to vote, and things of that nature. As it turned out, the turnout was pretty robust for a special election.
Yeah, and, and there was also just some misunderstanding and mischaracterization of, well, I could fix those, you know, cracks in the concrete. Just give me a bag of sacrete.
That was, that was my favorite quote from.
We made sure, we made sure that during our committee meetings, we included those people this time.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And, and. I was hoping a couple of them were gonna be here tonight, but there was a conflict, but, but, yeah.
Totally different tenor when we met with the Camden Select Board a few weeks ago.
And, and the couple of the members of the planning board that have been involved with the committee in it have taken the time.
Don, Don White's been at every one of the visioning committee meetings.
And John Schultz was an architect, and he was one of the members of the planning board that signed that letter from the planning board that thought that they could renovate and, and fix the building. And I, you know, I don't wanna speak for John, but I, he, at the Camden Select Board meeting, he stood up and said that he has changed his mind, now that he has understood everything.
Good. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Thank you very much for coming. Did Marcia, did you wanna say something?
I just wanna get a sense from each of you which you think is the best option.
New. I mean, I, I would lean toward new, based basically on that bottom, bottom-line number, the, the cost per useful life per year. That number means a lot to me.
So the part that convinces me that a new building is, without, without having spent a lot of time in this, that I'm, I'm leaning toward the new building, is looking at the high school, and looking at the fact that that debt is basically retired. And the condition of that building now is fantastic.
So that fact is, has changed a lot of people's mind.
Yeah.
You know, comparing to the, you know, looking at what we have twenty years later with the high school, when the debt's retired, and how good of a facility that is. And when you look at that bottom line of what are we gonna have in twenty years with each of those three options, it really becomes a no-brainer.
And, and, and having served for three years on the school board, I, I know that Keith and his crew just, just make really good decisions. You know, they're, they're an asset to the community, in taking care of our asset.
Yeah, and some people have asked, like, well, why did you defer all the maintenance on the middle school? Why is it in the state it's in? The answer is that we haven't deferred, most recently, we are jury-rigging nineteen-fifties-era fans instead of doing what we should be doing. But the M E T building is almost a hundred years old. Schools are built to last fifty if you're lucky. We are so far past that, it simply is an old-aged building. It looks remarkably good on the facade and the surface. In some places.
Except for the points where you can see right through it.
Yeah, except for you can stick your, look outside. But they have done a good job maintaining it. It's not that, that building hasn't been maintained. The, the systems, if Keith were here, he would tell you that almost every single system in the building needs to be upgraded. They're just, it's, we have the elevator, they're, they're no longer parts made to replace the, if anything breaks in the elevator, you cannot buy parts. Our boilers, you can't buy parts. We got a lot of very old systems.
Be the same thing in this building, too.
Yep.
Stairlift and the burner.
So this is dated and may not be a helpful part of the conversation, but I attended like a public workshop the last time around, and there was a, a, a question asked of the people in the room, because at the time, the various proposals that were being debated included, I think there was an option that was building new but retain the Mary Taylor Building. And I was struck by the strength of sentiment for retaining the Mary Taylor Building at that time. Have you, was that part of the conversation?
Because I remember that, I remember that, too, because I made a comment, and I was misquoted, because I, I said that the Mary Taylor Building is the only architecturally interesting building on the whole school campus. And I got misquoted as saying it was the only architecturally interesting building in all of Camden. But at any rate, but at the same time, we were also told at that time that it was horribly inefficient, and really unable to be retrofitted as far as heating systems and cooling systems and things like that. And so when you look at it that way, it's like, yes, it's, it's a beautiful-looking building. It's a hundred-year-old building. It looks nice, but it just doesn't work anymore.
We've actually been very surprised at the response. There hasn't been as big of a sentiment to keep that building that we expected. I mean, in the first go-around, we felt like we really needed to keep that as part of the master plan.
I mean, I was floored by the percentage of the cost of the total project, that restoring that building.
And a lot of people ask, you know, so twenty-six million dollars, what are the luxuries? You know, they really, I mean, we have a few spaces that are larger than the state would require, because we have extremely large programs, like chorus and band are very large. But the biggest luxury would be keeping M E T. The cost to renovate M E T is, it was three-point-four million dollars of the original project, because so much work would need to be done to that building. And part of it comes back to, you know, so people have some nostalgia for it, but do they have three-point-four million dollars' worth of nostalgia for it? And, and whose responsibility at some point, like, should the school bear that responsibility of spending that much money that may defeat a project? Because some people have nostalgia. We, we, we're, we're very happy to give the building away to anyone who wants it, and, and we've been told it could move off the site. And so if, if there are people who have nostalgia, who wanna move it, you know, we'd be happy to give it to somebody.
So new in this current plan does not involve?
It doesn't.
No.
And, and getting back to, scratch, scratch your heads as to what the disconnect was, there were a fair amount of people that I talked to last time around who felt that the misguided or perhaps misnumbered, misunderstood portion about keeping Mary Taylor's building was a symptom of the fact that you didn't get out broadly enough, that you were talking to yourselves.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I don't mean to be crass, but, but that's, that's what a lot of people are saying. What the heck, I would never keep that building. But, and then what are they thinking of? Well, they haven't come to talk to me, therefore they're silly.
And there are some people we've talked to since those public forums, when it was a relatively small group of people who might have been very much internal or closer to it, who had that sentiment. And most people that we've talked to, it hasn't been as big a factor as we thought. There are some people who feel very strongly about it and would like it to be preserved, and I can understand that. But, you know, I'm just not sure we can afford to preserve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further comments? Thank you all for coming.
Well, I'm ready to give Owen the chance to put in his two cents.
Oh, that's right. We didn't get all the way down the line.
I was maybe purposely being quiet.
Multiple interruptions.
So I, I'm on the committee with them, and I've been following this. I'm for sure leaning towards new construction. All the numbers make sense. It all makes sense. I think the only portion where I may break from the group a little bit is in the funding of what. And from spending as much time on it as I have, which is not as much as you all, and I would like to give huge props to the committee, because everyone shows up, everyone does a lot of hard work. This is a high-functioning committee. The only way that I break a little bit is that little bit of above and beyond. And what I've kind of come down on is the side that I believe it's appropriate for us to have the citizens pay for a bond that meets with the state standard. And all the above and beyond, as small as they are, and they're extremely, that all makes sense. The band and the choral room, it ma, it makes sense for the programming that you have and the robustness of that programming. My hope is that between the money that you've put aside and what the Capital Campaign Committee can do, they'll be able to pay for those additional amenities, and that we can ask the citizens to pay for a state-standard school. And what we do above and beyond, as appropriate as it is, very similar to my position on the library, that that should be a private fundraising thing, similar to what they did with the high school. So the new construction makes complete sense to me, but when we go and ask the citizens to pay for the school, I will be advocating that we bond out for what is the state standard, and that the above and beyond would be the money put aside and the Capital Campaign Committee. And did, I wanted to ask Oak Hill about that. Do we have any idea what that state standard? Because it's a simple rubric. It's, it's square foot per student. We have a square foot. This, the last page is interesting. This is something that I had kind of requested, which is a comparison with other similar schools in our area in a similar timeframe. So we could ask Tyler for some of those numbers, and I'm sure he'd be able to provide them. If it becomes something that's unreasonably attainable for the capital campaign and for the money that's put aside, I'll have to assess that when I get there. But that's kind of where I've fallen, that if we're asking the citizens to pay for something, there is a state standard. We should ask them to pay for the standard.
But is there a state standard in terms of dollars per square foot? There can't be.
No, no, there isn't. And I, I think, I think the only thing that, that I'd be careful of is, I think if, if you try to hold to the state standard, then you'd really be doing a disservice. I mean, I think we're really fortunate. There's such a huge participation in band and chorus activities, and that's been one of the biggest problems with the current school, is that they don't have space for the number of kids they have. And if you went and looked at the spaces when they're all in there, it's, it's, you know, it's ridiculous. They don't have ventilation. It's, it's terrible facilities for the number of kids. And I think we wanna promote that. I mean, that's a great thing that our community.
What's interesting about the concept, though, is that if you leave the phrase "state standard" out of it, but appeal to people from a donating perspective, appeal to them about specific amenities or programs, like.
The Strom Auditorium?
Yeah. I mean, my understanding is there was very generous giving specifically to Strom for that reason. And if the, and if people feel that they are, I mean, it's like for a nonprofit, right? It's really hard to get. It's really hard to get general fund dollars. But you can get people to, to, to deliver money for programming. For specific, I want to fund this. Um, the, the state standard terminology, it feels like it means things to other people that I don't understand, but the idea of if there's going to be a capital campaign, tie, maybe tying those dollars to things that you know will be popular.
And we have talked about, you know, using that and the fact that we do have such a robust band and choral, um, you know, program to help us get people interested in that extra two-and-a-half million that we're trying to raise.
Yeah.
But you're right, those type of things do get people excited, too.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I, I definitely appreciate you getting us on the agenda. I know it was a little bit of a last second, um, so thank you very much for your time. This has been really good feedback.
Well, thanks, thanks to you guys for coming, too.
Yeah, thank you very much.
They really have, I mean, the, the differences in the, in the packets from one meeting to another, you can see the amount of time that they put into it from meeting to meeting. It's always really impressive.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we have the Recreation Committee next. There's some sentiment about wanting to take a brief break. Are you guys okay with a five-minute bathroom break or?
How long is our floor?
As long as you want it to be.
Two minutes.
About two minutes.
Two minutes.
Let them go.
Okay, come on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I will even speak privately.
Thank you.
So just a quick summary of the last five to six months. Um, we started this summer with the desperate need to get the Babe Ruth Field at Marge Jones, um, safe to continue the season. Public Works came in with the help of Owen, got that done in a forty-eight-hour period. The season was able to continue. That was excellent, but that was obviously just the beginning. Um, so we had basically three stages of work that needed to be done on the three fields, the Little League baseball field, the Little League softball field, and the Babe Ruth baseball field. Um, the first stage was we needed our electrical fixed. We had about fifty percent of power coming in, um, to our concession stands, our, um, two scoreboards at the Little League fields that are functioning, um, the irrigation system, and there's not a functioning scoreboard at Babe Ruth Field at the moment. Um, Tom Hedstrom from Hedstrom Electric came in and did a pretty quick repair and got the electrical a hundred percent working, so that was great. We then got Sports Field in to, um, give us an estimate on the three baseball infield, and the softball infield and the two baseball infield, to straighten out base paths, make sure there were no lits, um, sod along the baselines and inside the infield of the Babe Ruth Field and the Little League Field. No, actually, they didn't sod the Babe Ruth Field, just the Little League Field. And then the softball field is all infield material, there's no sod there. Just, um, they just fixed the lits along the baselines. So before they could come in and take care of that, um, they requested that we take a look at our irrigation system, because the sod they did put down for the Little League baseball field would need watering. And so we had a, we had them take a look at it, we had Farley's come in, and to our delightful surprise, for a very minimal amount of money, they were able to get the entire irrigation system at Marge Jones functioning. So that was a big win for us. Um, and that was all completed before Sports Field came in to begin their work. Um, in the fall, we have Penn Bay Soccer going on, on the outfield of all three fields. Um, but Sports Field came in and within three days had the infield taken care of, they didn't get in each other's way at all, there was great communication, and the fields looked great. Um, I heard from Rick Brezeham, he said the fields were great and that it didn't impact soccer at all. Um, so those major renovations have been taken care of, which are wonderful. Going forward, we still have some things that need to be done, we've got some fencing that's broken. Um, the backstop in the, on the Babe Ruth Field is leaning, pulling the cement up, the cement, um, foundation on the, the pole right out of the ground, which was part of our safety concerns this summer, that we had exposed concrete, um, on the backstop in the field of play for the baseball players. So, um, that will need to be addressed, because as that continues to lean, that cement's going to continue, we can keep throwing dirt over it, but that cement's going to keep popping out of the ground. Um, there are some beautification things that we would like to see moving forward, including the sign at the road. There's a giant bush that seems to want to just grow very quickly right up over the sign. Um, but I do have a, an Eagle Scout prospect that would like to get some, um, a project ideas, so I'm going to have him coming into our, our meetings and see what parts of the beautification process he can help us with. Um, and then, I think going forward, our, so now that that's sort of all behind us, our meetings going forward are going to be talking a lot about how we can prevent Marge Jones from becoming, you know, in such disrepair going forward. And, um, as Owen brought up earlier at, a few months ago, the first Select Board meeting that I came to, part of the problem was just a lack of funding in the facility maintenance line item for, going back at least eight years. So we will come up with some numbers, um, in the very near future, of what it costs to keep those baseball fields, now that we've put all this money into it, um, looking good. We have Barrett, who is now our newest Recreation Committee member, is also very involved in both Little League and Babe Ruth, um, programs, as am I. Um, so we'll work together with those programs to make sure that field maintenance is done properly, make sure that we have the right materials there and the right manpower with the right knowledge to make sure going forward, our fields look as beautiful as they do right now. And, and even more so when we get some of the other little details fixed.
And maybe if you could touch on, um, we're working on signage for best practices.
Right.
For post-game maintenance.
Right, so part of, I mean, one of the, um, issues with our baseline is really, you know, ten years of raking out the infield material, uh, and not replacing it, that's part of it, but also just raking it incorrectly, or, um, just, I think, natural erosion of the material onto the grass, creating very dangerous lits that baseballs can hit and ricochet and, you know, cause bloody fractured faces, which we don't want. So, um, we had talked about having some signage put up at each field, um, on the fences of each field, just a small metal sign with very clear instructions on proper field maintenance. And this is something Barrett has talked about at the board level at Little League, as well as Babe Ruth, um, teaching the coaches and the parents the proper techniques, but having the signage up to say, okay, rake, you know, along the base paths, not side-to-side where you're sweeping material up onto the grass, you know, just little things like that. And having the proper equipment accessible at the field, um, in order for them to maintain it properly. Because as you, as I sat through this two-hour meeting, talking a lot about the capital improvement projects, you know, this is capital improvement. You've put a lot of money now into these fields, so let's maintain them correctly, and it doesn't take a lot, it just takes, um, little paying attention year to year, which is what we're here for.
I think having this committee up and running and having such an active group of people that are committed to various parts of the different programs, and them all interacting and communicating will be a big, is a big help already. Um, and now budgeting going forward, we'll be able to get a better idea of budget numbers to plug in that, um, that makes sense, because in previous years, it's been just kind of guessing at what's needed, and, and the people that know best what's needed are you guys. You guys know best what's, what's needed there.
Right, and I don't think it will be any, there will be any sort of sticker shock as far as adding, you know, a maintenance budget to, for, for the Marge Jones facility to keep it, um, maintained at this level, not compared to what you've already put into it.
Is any of this stuff, um, I mean, it sounds like a, a good portion of, of what you guys were facing was sort of accrued damage over time.
Yes.
Is it all baseball-related? I'm, I'm thinking, Barrett, that we're part of a pretty active parent group with soccer.
Yeah, the, the soccer field, the, the problems were specific to the baseball and baseball infield. Baseball outfield have issues, and obviously the soccer usage damages it, but the real safety concerns really related to the infield of baseball. Most of that was a lack of annual maintenance, um, you know, material was never replaced, lack of educated maintenance among the user groups. Um, you wouldn't know, but how you rake the infield makes a difference. Um, you know, so there's an education and an ongoing maintenance process that the leagues themselves need to do a better job with, but also having some amount of annual funding to be replacing the infield material and doing the kinds of fertilization and other stuff is, been part of the problem. So there really was ten years' worth of accumulated neglect rendered the fields, not only the Babe Ruth Field where, um, teams refused to play, and, uh, the previous year I was at a Little League, uh, game and a, a visiting team, uh, wanted forfeit, wanted us to forfeit the game based on the condition of the field.
So when Sports Field came in a couple of weeks ago, they addressed the infield issues of the three fields. They, you know, they fixed the infield. The outfield issues that we have, which include, um, weeds, ruts, um, and fencing and things along those lines, um, were not addressed. However, part of our annual budget will include simple, inexpensive things, really, of aeration and fertilization. So, um, coming in, in, um, so for instance, the Little League baseball field, I'm sure they all have it, but I know the Little League baseball field has some pretty severe ruts in the outfield, because when you're nine and you're in left field.
Those are the soccer.
Well, that's what I, I mean, I was.
Whether somebody's spilling them or not, the Leaguers dig holes in the outfield.
They dig, because they're standing there for a long time with nothing to do.
I never did that as a.
No. So I, I specifically asked.
A guy in the outfield there.
I mean, I'm just thinking how relatively easy it would be to get, you know, probably a couple of dozen parents and forty kids, you know, at the beginning and the end of the soccer season.
Harder than you think.
Well, I think, actually, that speaks to part of the issue of, of how the, the neglect developed, is that the people, the parents that are involved with Little League and Babe Ruth, they change as the years progress.
True.
And there was a group of parents, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, that did most of the work out there and, and really kept the fields up, and then as things might.